That got done right when I came in. I took all the credit for it, Dan.
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. Do we have? Okay. I think he'll, I don't think he'll be upset that we started. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Legislative Day nineteen will now come to order for our work session. This is the work session for the legislative session on November seventeenth. So first up, we have Director Lafferty from the Department of Planning on Bill seventy-three twenty-five, zoning regulations, artisan manufacturing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just, this is the only way I can be heard. And the reason, I just want to make everyone aware, the members, everyone in the gallery, anyone in the Netherland who may be listening and trying to watch. We are obviously having a few technical difficulties today. We've had some various people in the room over the last few days looking at our system because of the council expansion, and I forget what else, but, and we're not sure whether it's because of the solar storm happening, but everything that's wireless is not working as it should, so, which is, and the cameras on the monitors are not working. So we're a little bit not at our best today, but we will get through it. So my apologies.
Uh-oh, the C A O is sending troops, and that's, then there's trouble. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We got, we got Councilman Jones on. I see cameras up here, too. I'm gonna start putting cameras on people, Chris. Director Lafferty, sorry. Spring twenty-five. Okay. Any questions from the members? Thank you, Director Lafferty. And we actually have another, we have a fiscal item I think you were gonna cover as well. It's the amendment to the Red Gate Real Estate Advisors contract. Do you wanna talk about that as well? Yes, sorry. We figured we'd get it all done at once. And thank you for that.
Test, testing? I'm muted, yeah. All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration requests approval of the Second Amendment to the county's contract with Red Gate Real Estate Advisors. This will enable Red Gate to continue providing advice and support in our efforts to transform the Social Security Mall property into a vibrant and vital part of western Baltimore County. From the outset, the county has sought to put this forward as a solicitation for our property, which is thirty-nine acres on this site, and put it into the hands of a developer who could help us realize the vision and goals that the communities expressed initially in the charrette that we conducted in two thousand and twenty-three. The amendment is critical to our efforts to retain a master developer for sixty-nine acres of this mall property. As you know, we are partnering with Security Square Holdings to obtain a master developer for the property that we own, and that property, which is also owned by Security Square Holdings and its property manager, City View Commercial. The county with Red Gate recognized that partnering with another property owner on the mall would not only enhance, but also increase the attractiveness of the site and the potential to sell it to a developer. Security Square Holdings, which is the other large property owner, owns thirty acres, including the mall, the interior mall itself, and approaching them and working with them made the most sense, and we wanted to advance the biggest possible opportunity for redevelopment. Therefore, we made contact with them a number of months ago, began extensive negotiations to strike an agreement that the partners, for the partnership in order to market all of the properties that they own and that we own together. Collectively, not only do we own the buildings that are formerly Sears and Macy's, they own the mall properly, including where Burlington Factory was. They own the vast majority of the parking bay, parking area on the site. And when we began negotiations back in the spring, we entered first into a letter of intent, and that set up the opportunity for us then to enter into an agreement with Security Square Holdings. In the agreement itself, it recognizes that we have vacant buildings and adjacent parking areas, which will be opened up for potential redevelopment. It does exclude the current AMC movie theater, which the owners of Security Square Holdings will retain, plus the parking that is surrounding it. The agreement does provide for us to not only work collectively and collaboratively, to also find a mutual user that satisfies their interests and our interests as well, and it meets the goals, and frankly, our focus point has maintained, been maintained on the outcomes and aspirations of the community. One of the elements of this agreement was then to work collectively to put together a request for a proposal, and as you know, we did issue a request for a proposal on October twenty-third to the development community at large, not only local developers, but also developers from throughout the country. In this RFP, we've committed to a schedule. That schedule will allow us to hopefully receive the applications from interested prospective developers by the end of this year, then move into a vetting phase, and then subsequently into negotiations with prospective selected developer. We will be working with Security Square Holdings to select that protective, prospective developer as provided for in the agreement. The distribution of any sales proceeds, because the premise has been as well that the county will sell the property or enter into an extended long-term lease. The proceeds will be shared up by pro rata, as laid out in the agreement, based upon the total acreage that we control and that Security Square Holdings also controls. We are going to split the cost of surveys, but other than that, individual costs that are incurred are on each of the parties. Obviously, the terms of the agreement, which were actually developed by our law office in conjunction with their attorney, provides for various hold harmless clauses, as well as addresses breach of any agreement, any parts of the agreement. The agreement will last for one and a half years from the time it was executed, which was the end of September of two thousand and twenty-five. So that should take us through to approximately March of two thousand and twenty-seven for this agreement. We believe that in working with county purchasing, as we have done, that we are able to basically lay the parameters out as we did for the RFP. We work with Red Gate to put this together. Red Gate took the lead in helping us to develop the actual RFP, and then, of course, got the agreement by the partner, Security Square Holdings. Our work is really further enhanced and supported by the revitalization tax credit that the council passed just a few weeks ago. We appreciate that support because that's another way that we can induce, hopefully, a quality developer. The proposed contract, Second Amendment, will take us into September of two thousand and twenty-six and cost one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This is nine months at a rate of twenty thousand dollars a month, which basically continues the same rate of payment that we've been making since the beginning of the term in March of two thousand and twenty-four. Now, these funds are already available to us as part of the pre-development monies, the thirty million dollars that was provided to us by the state and by the county capital budget. So there's no additional monies being incurred that aren't already available for this purpose. The county's initial contract was in March of two thousand and twenty-four to provide four various phases of service to put us in this position to retain a developer. And the redevelopment of this aging and declining mall remains paramount in our eyes. The contract was for a four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and was initially to end at the end of September of two thousand and twenty-five. However, in April of two thousand and twenty-five, the agreement was extended with no additional cost to pick up another ninety days to carry us through to December seventeenth of this year. By this time, by early April, May, actually in March, Macy's had already made its decision to dispose of many of its properties, and they approached us about purchasing their property. We knew that we needed more time in order to get this negotiation completed, but also that that was going to delay our efforts to put the property on the market. So Red Gate agreed to restructure its payment agreement, and since there was no change in either the compensation or total compensation, it was determined that by the law office that we did not need to bring that amendment to the council. It was also around the same time we began serious discussions with Jack Friedler on behalf of Security Square Holdings and City View Commercial, and entered into this letter of intent. This, too, required more time than we initially expected in our contract with Red Gate, and so this extended the time that we also required in order to get to the point where we are today. Red Gate has been an invaluable partner. They provide a level of expertise and knowledge on a national level, understanding of large-scale redevelopment that we simply do not have. From the beginning, Red Gate has insisted that we meet on a weekly basis in order to make sure that we're sustaining the momentum, but also keeping on task. So this has enabled us to keep abreast as well of the activities that they're providing and the services that they're expected to provide under the original contract, not only the multiple phases, but the expected deliverables. The original contract did not have a specific set of tasks, was hours assigned to that agreement, but instead, on this weekly and sometimes more often basis, we're speaking to them either by phone in meetings or through emails, which has enabled us to continue maintaining a understanding of whether they're performing as they had committed to. Now, since Red Gate has come on board, they have been not only a strategic and tactical partner in setting out the processes, but also helped us, as I said, with extensive negotiations with Macy's and now with City View and Jack Friedler. They have developed an activation plan, provided market analysis for us, helped us do some research, brought together their own private and personal communications with MTA to help us with redline conversations, as well as done the reach out to a lot of developers, and guided us really through the negotiations where we are today. So this is a complicated project. We recognize that. We want to have Red Gate with us for the balance of this contract. We believe that we will enter into negotiations with the selected developer in the early winter, but that will carry us through into the summer before we're able to bring a contract to the council for approval. So the council will definitely have an opportunity to review and discuss any decision that's made at that point regarding a master developer. The original agreement did not come to the council because it did not involve any procurement on advice of council. So while the agreement was pivotal, issuing the RFP was another milestone, and we really had another pivotal point by enabling the administration to renew its contract or to extend the contract until September of two thousand and twenty-six, we believe this is gonna be essential for us to bring this project to fruition and really provide some transformative opportunity in western Baltimore County. With that, request your approval of this contract amendment. Any questions from the members? Okay. Thank you, Director Lafferty. All right. Next up, we have Director Buckler for an amendment to contract R K and K L L P On Call Sanitary Sewer Pipeline Design Services. How are you, ma'am? I see that.
So this afternoon, we are presenting to you an introduction for the addendum to the Rumel Klepper &amp; Call On Call Sanitary Sewer Pipeline Design Services Contract Helped by D P W T. The original contract was a qualification and experience-based selection awarded by the P S S C in February of two thousand and nineteen. The M B E goal for this contract is twenty percent. Council approved the original contract on January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, with a not-to-exceed amount of four million dollars in an initial four-year term with four one-year extensions through January of two thousand and twenty-eight. Current tasks are related to concentric compliance projects and other large pipeline improvement work. Some active tasks have existing or proposed amendments to include real estate negotiation and acquisition services. This was necessary due to the significant volume of acquisitions required for consent decree projects and the regulatory deadlines and the limited staff availability in the county real estate compliance office. Through this amendment, the compensation cap would be removed, allowing additional expected task amendments to be approved. All other terms of the contract remain the same. We ask council approve removal of the contract cap to facilitate completion of existing and future pipeline design projects. Will you be able to answer any questions?
Did you, did you see the auditor's questions on, on this? Is that something that? I mean, one of the questions is, what, what exactly are the limitations of the real estate compliance division that, that precludes them?
They have limited staff. They have fifteen total staff. Our projects alone would take all of their staff, and they wouldn't be able to do the necessary acquisition work related to development projects and any other department's work. So we've supplemented their work with outside firms.
But they, but they have the ability to do it if they, if they had the staff, right?
Had the time. The problem is, our consent decree deadlines have limitations on how long we can spend on acquisition work, so we are expediting that work through third parties.
Oh, go ahead. Madam C A O?
We have twenty-nine remaining projects, and the average is a hundred items per project. So that is more than a staff could do on a typical list of work, but then we also have other design divisions. We have sidewalk projects acquiring hundreds of items also, so it's just a volume issue.
Right, okay. Councilman Patoka, did you have a question?
Not a question, but I'd just like to disclose to my colleagues and to the public that my wife works for this firm, so I'm not gonna participate in any of the discussion, nor, and I will abstain from the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patoka. Any others? Members? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Good seeing you. Next up, we have Director Gutwold from P A I on clean services for cleanup of derelict buildings. My favorite subjects. Derelict buildings.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. The administration is requesting approval of two contracts with J L Santos LLC and P Two cleaning services to provide cleanup services for derelict buildings. This includes grass cutting to address a lot of our code enforcement issues. If you recall, this, the funding for this comes from the Neglected Property Fund, which is funded through liens and fines that are associated with each of the code enforcement issues that we have, and these contracts will last for four, for one year with an automatic renewal for four additional one-year period. It's essentially to deal with the code enforcement issues of grass cutting and trapped junk and debris for all the properties that we deal with in code enforcement. It comes, like I said, comes out, there's about one point five million dollars that we generate out of non-tax liens and fines each year. That's what the seven and a half million dollars over five years accounts for. This is associated specifically with the cleanup and grass cutting services that we provide through these contracts. We have, also have other contracts that deal with that, like the property fund for the rat eradication program and the unsafe structures, so. You have any questions?
Any questions from the members? Director Gutwold, it looks like we've been below a million, and now we're five years at seven point five million, which is roughly, what's that, one point two or three million?
It runs, average, the, the fund runs about one point five around, is what we get. What we're spending is just, that, that, less than a million is just for the cleanup services and grass cutting. There's also rat eradication that comes out of that same fund, which is our different contracts.
So that's in that as well?
Five, yeah. It's not necessarily, they're different contracts. So what's, we're, we're talking about the seven point five million of across five years is the total amount of funds in the Neglected Property Fund category. So it's then that on cleanup and derelict and trash junk and debris each and every year, but the to, we're just identifying the total amount that comes, what the fund has. Makes sense?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Deb Schindl, Chief of Property Management, on a contract with Daken Applied Americas, Inc., service and maintenance of chillers in the Courts Building and Historic Courthouse.
Good evening, Councilman Chair.
Schindl.
Good evening, Councilman Chair and members of the county council. The administration's requesting an approval of a contract with Daken Applied Americas. The contractor shall provide service and repair to the chillers located in the Baltimore County Courts Building and the Towson Historic Courthouse. This agreement shall take effect when executed by county council and shall be a one-year term at which the county may exercise the options for nine one-year renewals. This is a sole source agreement. The total estimated compensation for this contract is three hundred thousand, and I'm willing to take any questions you may have on this contract.
Any questions from the members? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Schindl. Appreciate you. That's, that's Mr. Martin's walk-up music. Chris, Chris, Mr. Chris Martin, Director of O I T, on two contracts. Do you wanna, you wanna replay that music for me?
Hi. Good evening, council members and council chair. I have two fiscal matters. The first is for C D W LLC Hardware, Software and Related Services. This fiscal matter is to modify an existing agreement with C D W, C D W Government LLC for information technology, hardware, software, and related services in support of the technology needs of Baltimore County government and the services provided to the citizens, citizens of Baltimore County. The Office of Information Technology will utilize C D W to provide technology, hardware, software-related services, including network and data security, workplace collaboration tools, scalable network solutions, software installation, upgrades and maintenance, and system and network integration. Specific requirements will be developed on a task order basis that will include a statement of work acceptable in form and substance to the county in its sole discretion. On November second, two thousand and twenty, the county awarded C D W LLC incorporating the competitively bid contract from Fairfax County, Virginia, Department of Information Technology Solicitation. The contract's initial term to twelve-four, two thousand and twenty, with five one-year renewal options. On June eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five, Fairfax issued an amendment to add one additional one-year renewal option. If approved by council, the total compensation will not exceed the county council-approved appropriations during the additional one-year renewal options. appropriations during the additional one-year renewal options. I do have a couple auditor questions for this one. The first is the office advised that the estimated compensation totals, and it's about 38 million for the current five-year and one-month term, which is 17 million more than the estimated compensation of 21 million when the council approved the original contract on November 2, 2020. And it asked to explain why the office expects total compensation to exceed the original estimate by 17 million. There's a few factors to this. This also occurred over the COVID period. That's part of it. Cybersecurity enhancements to include CrowdStrike, SailPoint, Veronese, Qradar, and C dis requirements that resulted in additional licensing costs, inflation of equipment, and software costs that could not have fully been predicted. There's, software companies are moving away what is traditionally a perpetual license and forcing us to transition to subscription licensing. This is something that's hitting all IT departments right now. New county initiatives that were previously unknown, which can be at the executive and/or agency department level. There's been multiple renegotiations of multi-year renewal agreements, political decisions at the federal level pushing costs upwards, including tariffs, mergers and acquisitions that result in significant pricing model changes. There's been a high volume of consolidation in these tech companies over the past several years. The next question was what mechanisms are in place, if any, to notify the council of expenditures on contracts that are far exceeding the initial estimations, in this case by 77.8%? The Auditor's Office thoroughly reviews the budget each year during legislative budget review. This agreement was not to exceed county council-approved appropriations. The dollar amounts budgeted for the products and services has remained consistent. However, where we source products and services will vary. And then the last question was the office advised that the amendment will extend the contract for one additional year in order to align the term with the extension authorized via Fairfax County, Virginia Cooperative Agreement. Given the greater-than-anticipated contract costs noted above, the office considers terminating its cooperative agreement and soliciting its own RFP, RFB. It's something that we always consider, but we chose not to because CDW is a reseller, and we usually receive a discount off the list pricing. The Fairfax contract is used by multiple jurisdictions and therefore have a high discount off-list pricing already. And the non-direct personnel cost of taking this to an RFP, RFB, we don't think would offset the savings enough beyond what the cooperative agreement offers due to CDW being a reseller, not a producer. They're not making the goods that we're buying, they're selling them, you know, on behalf of somebody else, so.
Any questions from the members? Okay. And Mr. Martin, we have the Microwave Networks contract as well?
Yeah, this is a fiscal matter for the modification of existing contract with Microwave Networks Incorporated, MNI, under a sole source procurement for the maintenance of the digital microwave system used for the P25 Public Safety Radio System. MNI maintains the digital microwave system that interconnects the transmitter sites that form the backbone of the 800 megahertz digital trunk radio system. This system is critical infrastructure that supports public safety, voice, and data transmissions. The radio system is the primary form of communication between police, fire, and 911, and is crucial for operations and the safety of emergency responders. As a sole manufacturer of these microwave systems, maintenance can only be performed by MNI. MNI restricts third-party servicing and support by restricting schematics, replacement parts, making the sole source procurement necessary to maintain the system. The amendment will add an additional five one-year renewal options to the existing agreement. The total compensation paid to this vendor cannot exceed county council-approved appropriations. The total estimated spend for all remaining renewal options is $308,178. Happy to take any questions for that.
Okay. Any questions from the members? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Martin. We appreciate it. Okay. Next up, we have Resolution 5125 from Councilman Jones. They approve review of a plan unit development, PUD, for Red Run Meadows. Councilman Jones, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair. This has been somewhat of a very interesting scenario where all parties in the negotiations for the community benefit, this is basically 153-unit townhouse development that'll take place up on Red Run Boulevard. And we are working through the community benefit now. It's been somewhat elusive, but the bottom line is we should definitely have it. We've gone back and forth quite some time, but we should have that benefit over to everyone before Monday's vote. Basically, this townhouse community is going to answer a much-needed additional housing here in Baltimore County, and the prices hopefully will be at a price point that beginning first-time home buyers can afford. So the property could have produced a lot more townhouses. However, you know, I've been working with the developer insisting that we have adequate parking and adequate green space. So I think it's going to be a very good development. Any questions? Sorry about my video going in and out.
No worries. Any questions from the members? All right. Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Sure.
All right. Next up, we have Director Hickey from the Department of Housing and Community Development on three different resolutions. I think they're all really on the same thing, correct?
Three for one tonight. Okay, perfect.
All right, Mr. Hickey, whenever you're ready.
All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. As you said, I'm here today on behalf of the administration requesting council approval for three resolutions, 5625, 5725, and 5825. Each is related directly to Lockraven Overlook, which is a planned 122-unit housing community that will be located on two adjoining parcels of land at 8710 and 8712 Lockraven Boulevard in Towson. Once constructed, the development will consist of two buildings, one consisting of 50 units and a second consisting of 72, for 122 total. Lockraven Overlook, when constructed, will include one studio, 49 one-bedrooms, 57 two-bedrooms, and 15 three-bedrooms, 18 units reserved for households with incomes at or below 30% of the area median income, 98 reserved for households at or below 60% AMI, and six reserved for households at or below 80, which in that part is roughly market workforce housing. Units will remain affordable for a period of at least 40 years. As you know, this project is really important for a number of reasons. First, it allows us to take a big jump towards getting more of the units done towards the VCA. Once approved, these would be 115 units, counting as VCA-eligible. It's also new construction, which is important that we have that balance of preservation and new. It'll also create 15 three-bedroom units, which are the hardest for us to acquire, 18 at lower income, which is another requirement of the VCA, and maybe most important, six UFAST compliant or wheelchair-accessible units will be built into the plan. Overall, this project helps the county advance its goal of creating new opportunities for residents to access stable, affordable housing while also redeveloping a historically problematic hotel property. So sort of walk through these procedurally. Resolutions 5625 and 5825, so we jump over. So 5625 and 5825, if approved, will allow the county to enter into 20-year pilot payment in lieu of tax agreements to provide financial assistance to support the affordability of the 72 units at 8712 Lockraven, which is Resolution 5625, and 50 units located at 8710 Lockraven, which is Resolution 5825. Just take a pause. This would normally be one pilot, and it would have the same terms. Because this is two tax parcels, and it's two sides of a low-income housing tax credit twin, a 9% and a 4%, and they're going to have different legal entities owning them, we have to do a separate pilot resolution for each one. The terms will, however, be the same or both, traditional amount starting at $300 per unit and escalating annually throughout the life of each agreement. Resolution 5725 authorizes the county to provide a $3.5 million, 40-year loan from county federal home funds to partially fund the costs associated with construction. The loan will have a 0% interest rate during the construction period, which is expected to last approximately 16 and a half months, and then a 2% interest rate during the permanent loan period, which would commence upon the completion of the construction and continue for 40 years. So again, 5625, 5825, the two pilot agreements, 5725 for the loan. I do want to thank the chair for all of his attention and support to this important project, and happy to take any questions.
Councilman Potoka?
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Curious, I got a bunch of questions, some related to this, some related to kind of the overall housing market. So 0% and 2% is extremely low, and this interest rate is extremely low, 0, it's a great deal. Is that what our peer jurisdictions are doing to try to accomplish this, providing that kind of incentive?
And 0 is during the construction period. So typically, you're not doing a repayment process during construction. So post-construction, low interest rates, below 5%, is what you're going to see. Many jurisdictions are doing 0 across the board. Many, you're tying it to cash flow, which on a li-tac deal, you're probably not going to see cash flow throughout the life. So even if you had a rate, you wouldn't see payback. But this is a solid deal that'll see us getting money back over the course of the loan. But it is.
Do you have a sense, both for the rental market and for, and I know this could be a moving target, but I'm just going to ask it, for the rental market and for the homeowners' market, homebuyers' market? We keep hearing, and Councilman Jones alluded to it just in his presentation, of affordable to first-time buyers, affordable housing for apartments. Do you have a sense of what that number is? What is, when we say affordable, are we talking for an apartment 1,000, 2,000, 3,000? Or is it different for families? And if we're talking for homeownership, is that 300, 400, 500,000? Now we're hearing all kinds of crazy deals that play into this, like a 50-year mortgage, which to me seems, I don't know what your thoughts are, Mr. Reed, but it seems unconscionable to me to get in that. So if you're 40 years old and you are a first-time homebuyer, then when you're 90, you have purchased your home. You can burn, you like that? Got some thumbs up from the audience. So I know that so many, and the reason I mention the 50-year mortgage is because it's been talked about, but there are so many factors that play into your monthly payment. I just wanted to know, you're an expert in this, Mr. Hickey, like what, how would you define affordable for apartments and for homebuyers?
So it's tricky on the rental side. We'll get back to that in a second. The homeownership side, we started looking at in relation to how the federal government allays its support for first-time homebuyers, and we actually just did some stat work on this, and be happy to talk about it in more depth. But I think as a good target number, if you look at something affordable to that sort of workforce, 60, 80% AMI, first-time homebuyer is in the 350, $375,000 range. And when you start to look at available, so it's two things. It's what's affordable, but then what's affordable and available. So something may be affordable for the family, but there's no inventory or product in that price band. It doesn't matter if you can afford it or not. So there's going to have to be, it's a much bigger conversation that, you know, I love having, but there's going to have to be a balanced conversation between subsidy and investment and inventory. On the rental side, what you're starting to see because of wages staying fairly stagnant is you're starting to see what was lower-market workforce housing coming closer to what we used to call affordable technically under federal rules, that's 70, 80%, up to 100% AMI. So we can show you what the newest tables are, and you can kind of see what that looks like. Depends on the family size and all of that for rental. But we've been doing more and more, and I think I've talked to some of you, is when we talk to folks that want to develop, and they look at certain parts of the county, they're surprised that their target market rents are very close to what we used to see as things we needed to subsidize as affordable, meaning we may not always have to put money into those deals to ensure we have units people can afford if they zero out, but we're going to need more. Does that make sense?
Yeah, understood. Thing is, 350,000 for a new home, like that used to me, that you used to see developments that said, starting at the 350s. And I just haven't seen that in a good while, and I know supply chain plays into it, interest rates play in it, there's so many factors that play into it. So I just wonder, what is our definition and what is our expectation on what affordable is? Sometimes I see like 350 in a neighborhood. It's not a brand-new home, but you'll see it in, you know, one unit here, one home in this other neighborhood. But in terms of new construction, and maybe I'm just driving in the wrong places, but I haven't seen 350 in quite some time.
That's part of the problem.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Yeah, Councilman Marks?
So since this location was in my council district until 2022, I'm very curious about its development. What's the timeline for construction, do you know?
So the developer expects to close on the construction financing and proceed with demolition in Q1 of next year. Because there's federal funding in this, we also have to make sure that we check all the right boxes before they go to close. But we feel pretty solid about a Q1 close, Q1 demolition of the existing structure, which is currently closed as a hotel, you know that. And then we have, we're estimating a 16 and a half month timeline for development.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
You and the help and assistance and helping us think through when it was in your district. So thank you again.
And we believe that this building, what we know that removing the motel was a good thing, but we're excited to be able to move permanent people, permanent residents onto this site, and we believe that we will be able to build around this as well, once we have real people living there versus transients that are coming and going literally every I think it's going to go a long way to stabilize the Lockraven and Joppa corridor, and I know Councilman Marks was very concerned about that when he represented the area, and we're working hard to clean it up and make it livable over there. So we appreciate all your help on this. All right. Thank you, Director Hickey. Unless there's any other questions from anyone on, any council people online? Next up, we have Director Smith, Director of Department of Wreck and Parks, on a donation from the Rotary Club of Catonsville for the Catonsville Community Park. Director Smith, how are you?
I'm well, Council Chair.
Good.
This will perhaps be my last work session.
We'll figure something else out.
Figure something out, sir.
You leave.
Good evening. We're looking to accept a donation of $8,300 from the Rotary Club of Catonsville Sunrise, Inc., AKA the Rotary Club of Catonsville, to help with a park connection project, pathway connection to two side streets. The donation, along with the previously approved $20,000 donation from the Baltimore Community Foundation, is utilized for the construction expenses of the completed capital project that extends existing paved pathways to two nearby road endings to Catonsville Community Park, where we are also doing additional renovations. The path extensions approve pedestrian and non-motorized access to the park, its trails and other recreation facilities from neighboring streets to the east side of the park, and it will support both pedestrian access goals as well as ADA-related accessible goals. There were no additional costs for the project, and no county matching funds are required. The donations cover the project. Now, so we're looking for approval to accept this $8,300, $8,300 donation.
Okay.
For his advocacy.
You can't do that. But thank you first. No, Director Smith, just wanted to thank you worth working with the Rotary Club. It's been an ongoing project with them, and appreciate your teams. It's been an ongoing project with them and appreciate your team's willingness to talk and also figure out the right way to get this project done, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilman Young. Would that, the donation was, the park's already built?
Park's built, that park has been built for a long time. This was a connector and that project is done. The donation is coming in after the fin, the finalization of the path project, yes, sir.
I think Councilman Jones has a question.
No, I don't have a question. I guess wanted to make sure we convey a true thank you to the Rotary Club for their generous contribution and making the park better and more accessible to everyone. So this is what it takes when we have a good organization throughout Baltimore County, because unfortunately, we all know that we cannot do it alone. So big shout out to the Rotary Club, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. All right, thank you Director Smith, good seeing you. Next up, we have Bureau Chief Francis from the Fire Department about a donation from the Wawa Foundation for Community Risk Reduction. How are you, sir?
How you doing?
Good seeing you tonight.
Yep, so representing the Baltimore County Fire Department on Resolution 60-25, the Fire Department received a charity donation from the Wawa Foundation after their recent grand opening of their store in Nottingham. The donation was being, was given as charity for the Hoagies for Heroes Hoagie Building Competition, where we, when it gets to the police department, fortunately, we lost. But we're here tonight with the donation, so technically we won.
You lost in hoagie building? Who would think that would be a specialty, you know?
Yeah, somebody was a perfectionist on our team. The gift from the Wawa Foundation is for $1,000 and will go directly to our community risk reduction efforts in prevention and education directly to Baltimore County. We excited to be accepted.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Marks?
This is the Wawa and Bel Air and Putty Hill. So it's in your district, but it's pretty close to mine. But we thank Wawa.
Across the street.
Yes.
That's where we fire the potato gun over at the end of the 5th District. So it's not, it's not the Wawa next to the Denny's, right?
We're not going there.
Just curious. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. We have a, next up, we have a resolution, it's actually from me, amending the border of the Towson Commercial Revitalization District. I feel like we've done this before and I had a property that's actually down. It's, it's the area right behind Goucher, which actually has had some development. We have a, a senior building going up there and Whiting Turner is about to build their new world headquarters down there, but it, it was not part of the Towson Revitalization District previously. I, we thought that that whole area was, but it wasn't, so I would, I would like to add it. And I hope for support on this resolution. Goucher, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Unless there's any questions, Councilman Marks, did you?
Strongly support this. This was one of the last pieces of legislation that I worked on before the districts changed. And I think it's going to be a very unique campus there and something to look forward to.
Yeah, it should be. I'm excited that Whiting Turner has decided to stay here and build their own building there. And we're going to have the great new building that Goucher is building with the Edenwald right behind there too. So we're kind of, you know, we're, we're kind of taking an area that, that hasn't had any development to an area that will suddenly have, have some life to it. So, okay, next up, we have Director Coleman from Office of Human Resources on Personnel Law of Baltimore County. Ms. Coleman, how are you today? Good.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. Bill 7925 implements the changes to the Classification and Compensation Plan as recommended by the Personnel and Salary Advisory Board or required as a result of labor negotiations for FY 2026. Section 1 of the bill provides that pay Schedule 4, 6P, 7, and 8 of the standard salary grades for classified employees, as well as the Executive Pay Plan, are amended to adjusted pay schedules effective January 1, 2026. Specifically, Schedule 4 replaces the 27-year longevity with the 26-year longevity. Also, 9-year and 16-year longevities are added to Schedule 6P for Sheriff's Office employees. In addition, Schedule 4 and 6P for Sheriff's Office employees are each adjusted by 3% and Schedule 6P for emergency communication employees, 7, 8, the Executive Pay Plan are adjusted by 2%. Section 2 of the bill amends the pay grade for the title of Emergency Communications Manager for 33E to 34E effective January 1, 2026. And Section 3 of the bill amends a regulation in Rule 10 regarding standby pay and callback pay in Section 4 of the Compensation Plan Regulations effective January 1, 2026 and applies it retroactively to August 18, 2025. Specifically, Section 3 amends subsection I-1 and J-1 of Regulation 10.01, which lists the employee titles that are eligible for standby and callback pay in order to add the titles of safety officers and training and emergency operations coordinator. The Office of Budget and Finance advised that the FY 2026 budget impact of the proposed changes includes sufficient funds to cover the proposed changes.
Is that 3.7 million in one year? Director Reed? Okay. And that would just be these?
I'm commenting that we have a second one because of negotiations weren't completely finished at the time. But we specked out, it would be in the budget and it would go in basically where we thought it would. So these are not additional costs ever included in the budget.
And the, and the callback situation is, that's not going to be similar to the Fire Department, is it? Where we're paying time and a half to officers that already make a lot of money?
The safety officers and emergency operations coordinator. If we have to call them, if we got to a point where, when we needed to call the safety officer back, maybe before I asked them or something like that, they were not having to call. So it's just.
Very weird. Just pops out of nowhere. Oh. Your manual, you're on manual. Manual manipulation. All right, Ms. Coleman, thank you for being here, we appreciate you. Okay, next up, we have Captain Chad Miller from Baltimore County Police Department, Commercial Vehicle Safety Alliance. How are you, Captain Miller? Good.
Thank you for your time and consideration regarding Council Bill 8025. A grant award of $36,000 has been received by the Baltimore County Police Department from the Maryland State Highway Administration, exceeding the approved fiscal 2026 appropriation of $35,000 by $1,000. This request is for council's approval to accept and appropriate the additional $1,000 in funding. Baltimore County Police Department's Commercial Vehicle Safety Plan Grant through the Maryland State Highway Administration allows the police department to increase surveillance and enforcement presence on Baltimore County roads that are heavily traveled by commercial vehicles or used as bypass routes to avoid truck wait and inspection stations. With the key bridge under construction, commercial vehicle enforcement has become a vital mission for my section and for the police department. These funds will be utilized to attend Commercial Vehicle Safety Alliance training, workshops, and a conference to increase our surveillance capacities. No county matching funds will be needed. I appreciate your consideration on this bill. If you have any questions, gentlemen, we're happy to take them.
I don't think we have any questions and sorry you have to even be here to ask for this. Oh, good.
So, yes, thank you.
And you didn't have that painful of a meeting? It can be much worse. Councilman Potoka?
We used to make Major Wydeck stay until the very end. Good answer.
Thank you. Have a great night. Okay. Next up, Councilman Jones, zoning regulations, use is permitted in business major BM zone, animal boarding place, Class B. Councilman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is, for some reason, this business owner, they want to open up a grooming place that offers some boarding. And the particular zoning is exclusion. It, it allows for boarding of animals, but it excludes dogs. So I don't know who has a problem with the dogs and how that happened, but this is an attempt to rectify that and of course, be supportive of a small business in my district. Thank you.
Councilman Jones, is this a CCC district, is it BM CCC?
No, this is, this is business major. It's basically a shopping center.
It says permits an animal boarding place, Class B, in business major if it is located in a commercial revitalization district or a commercial community core CCC district?
Yes, the goal was not to change it throughout Baltimore County, but to basically assist this business owner and not get into, actually, Director Gutwall thought that we should change it for the entire county, but like so many things in the zoning code, I'm not sure why it got there, but we decided to guess play it safe and make sure we don't have any unintended consequences by just fixing this issue here in Rice's Town.
Councilman Potoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Jones, is this an indoor kennel or outdoor kennel?
This is outdoor and indoor. Basically, they're going to do the grooming and other things inside. And they'll have some space outside and some space inside.
Or can I ask you if dogs will be boarded outside?
Well, I'm assuming that based on the weather, they could go out in the yard or they can come inside.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking is related to adjacent neighborhoods, if it's outdoor and there's, I know that in, in my district, I've had some concern when outdoor kennels have been proposed, that, that's the reason I'm asking.
No, I understand. Well, interesting enough, this is not the only facility in that area, which made it even more interesting that the law would be applied to this new business, but not so much the old one. So I'm not really sure how that happened, whether they were grandfather or not. But the point is well-taken, but I don't think there'll be any concerns with the neighbors. I don't think it's close enough.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Jones, as always, for your advocacy for small businesses in your district. I just want some clarification because I want to make sure we're not creating a special law. This, this applies countywide, correct?
No, this does not apply countywide. It applies per the law with the district right in Rice's Town.
How was, could someone please clarify that?
Go. No, here.
As drafted, the bill applies to a Class A if located in the BM zone, as well as a commercial revitalization district or a CCC district. But it would not be limited to just one geographic area, other than those two parameters.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying this.
I'm more concerned about the CCC because generally that means there's people living above it or next to it. Like if it's, if it's straight up BM, then that's a business, like, you know, a business front. I mean, it could have housing behind it, but CCC usually means you have residential.
The use would be subject to Section 421.2 of the zoning regulations because that is the section that, that deals specifically with animal boarding places, commercial kennels, private kennels, or pet shops. And that, that would be implicated by this use. And one of the provisions or one of the conditions states that exercise areas, septic systems, dog runs, and parking areas may not be located within 200 feet of the nearest property line or lease line. Address the type of issues that this use would.
Okay, so theoretically, you couldn't live on top of the kennel in an apartment with this bill? Possible? I'm asking the question.
I'm not sure, I guess possibly, yes.
Okay.
I would think not, but you know, 200 feet is the limit. That's the rule.
If, if, because of that 200 feet.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any other questions from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Is that Councilman Catch?
It sure is.
Oh, holy.
Yeah, I have a question. If you all go back and remember the animal shelter on Manor Road, where the county had to build a sound barrier because of the layout of the new, at the time, the new animal shelter, because the dog runs were right in back of homes. And basically, if it had been designed correctly, the dog runs would have gone in the opposite direction and not produced all the noise from the dogs barking. So I hope that when this is designed, that the county will keep in mind the, the possible problem, if it's designed incorrectly, of the noise really being very loud. If you remember, it qualified for a sound barrier because the dogs made so much noise barking. So I think that we as a county need to take a closer look at the designs of these kennels to make sure that they don't produce the noise that the one in, on Manor Road did. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Catch.
By the way, the sound barrier costs $1.4 million that if we had designed the animal shelter correctly, we would have had to spend, so.
That's a lot of money.
Sure is.
Okay. I think next bill, unless there's other questions about this bill. Bill 7425, this one's mine. I talked about this at the last work session. This is a bill to allow, I have, actually have a project in, in Overly where we have a building that's being renovated. They're going to turn it into a office co-op building. The building formerly was. The building formerly was a catering hall for many years, and then it was a church. And it has a kitchen in it. The kitchen isn't up to par, but the owner of the building was looking at the possibility of turning the kitchen into a commercial kitchen, which would allow different vendors to come in and bake brownies or cookies or bagels, you name it, that they sell. A lot of times they're selling these at farmers markets, things like that, and they have to label so, and they need, my understanding is a lot of these, if you're selling these on a retail, you have to produce them in a commercial kitchen. You really can't do it in your home. So what this bill will allow is what we found on the books is that our zoning doesn't normally have a commercial kitchen and offices in the same building. This would allow for that. And it, and it does kind of, at least in this fashion, keeps it in the Overly-Rossville Commercial Revitalization District. But we believe this is going to be a great project and this, this bill, along with the Artisan Bill that we heard about first, kind of paves the way for some flexible use in BM CCC district. Any questions? Okay. And I have another, Bill 7525. This is rental property inspections. We talked about this at the last work session. Basically, this bill will authorize code enforcement, give code enforcement some additional, I guess, additional authority to investigate unauthorized rooming and boarding house, fire safety standards that aren't being followed, and unauthorized alterations to a property, which, which they have some of this ability now, but this just gives a slightly more authority to be able to do that. Yes, Councilman Young?
Sorry, could somebody, what is the slightly more authority?
The authority, the, the new authority is that no matter, if, if they want to go into a building, they can ask for permission. The owner can give them permission and, or a tenant. So if you're a rental property and they want to go in, the tenant gives them permission. They currently have the ability, if they don't get permission, to go get a court order to do it, a warrant
Right.
in front of the ALJ. This kind of just clarifies what, what ramifications they can do that on.
Oh, I see. In order to get, I see. Okay, understood, appreciated.
Yeah, so we just wanted to clarify the language, especially when it came to fire safety. We're finding that, especially in the Towson area, we have, we have landlords who will take a house, they're putting bedrooms in the basement, they're not permanent bedrooms. They have often no way to get out. So if there's a fire, there's no, you know, they, sometimes they have glass block windows where there's no possible way to get out of the window. Some have basement doors that have been covered by decks. And we're looking to kind of get more serious about that before we have a death. College Park, several years ago, had, I think, two deaths in a short period of time where they had two students who died in two different houses that were, had similar situations. We have an epidemic of this happening in Towson.
That makes, makes a lot of sense. I was just curious from the tweaks, but also understand now it's the addition for what they can also apply and move to the next step. Where currently they're restricted in those, in those scenarios where there might be violations. So I understand what you're saying.
Right. And, and, and code enforcement can't, has no authority to break into the house, you know?
Right, yeah.
As do the, as the police also don't as well. They, you have to get a warrant to go in.
Property rights still apply. It's their addition, I see what you're saying. There's additional, one, concerns that we're also seeing around the UMBC area as well. When there are violations, but we don't have the authority to go in, but there is a clear safety violation that needs to be invited in.
And this would apply there as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. All right, so unless others have questions on that, we have Bill 7625. This is from Councilman Marks, zoning regulations, energy storage devices.
Yes, thank you. This was legislation that was going to direct the Department of Planning to come up with some protocols for battery storage units. I think I'm going to withdraw the bill because I think I've achieved an understanding that the Department of Planning will look at this administratively. They will come back to a report with us on possible changes that can be made. Like solar facilities, the battery storage units are largely regulated by the state. But I think if, if that's amended to the administration, we can just do this as an administrative action.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Okay. Okay, so now we'll move on to Bill 7725. This is also from Councilman Marks, planning of sewage projects, property owner obligations. And Councilman Marks, I know you wanted to talk about this, and then we have a speaker that, from the administration also first.
Right, so, so thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Bill 7725, I believe greatly improves the transparency of the process by which households are connected to the public sewer system in Baltimore County. Bill 7725 modifies this process for any property that does not have a failing septic system. So in other words, if it is deemed to be a health concern by the administration, by Department of Environmental Protection Sustainability, it still has to proceed through the process, but this bill really applies to those properties that do not have a failing septic system. Before the county executes a contract for the construction of, or the financial responsibilities for a project, the directors of the Departments of Public Works and Transportation and Environmental Protection Sustainability Department must, number one, identify any participating property that does not have a failing septic system. Number two, provide those property owners with a full disclosure statement that includes estimated products, project costs, and a schedule of the anticipated assessments and financial responsibilities in a legal document that will be recorded in Baltimore County's land records. I do want to thank the administration. We've had some excellent feedback on this, really good engagement. We have an amendment coming from the administration that I think we, we both can agree to, and I'll ask Mr. Croner if he could maybe speak to that.
Mr. Croner, how are you? Good.
Great. Good afternoon, Chairman of the town, members of the council. For the record, Brad Croner, Deputy Director of Government Affairs for the administration. First, I'd like to express my thanks to Councilman Marks for working with us to address our concerns with this legislation, as discussed previously in the last work session and by Councilman Marks today. This bill, as drafted, does pose some implementation concerns. It would be difficult to plan, design, and put out an RFP for a sewer project without knowing the properties that are connected to that sewer project, is what our concern is. But as a compromise, what we can do is modify the way the bill is structured. So rather than deferring the opt-in phase until after we put out an RFP, we would propose creating an opt-out phase, if that makes sense. So after discussing this issue with Councilman Marks, we'd like to propose an amendment that does just that, where the county would notify impacted residents when a project reaches the 95% review phase. Within 30 days, the property owner could opt out when they written form DPWT. That's basically the structure of what we'd recommend, and I think this helps resolve this issue. And I'd like to thank Councilman Marks again for partnership here.
I think it accomplishes the same thing, right? And, and it, it allows for homeowners to make that independent judgment, and it also, I think, gives the Department of Public Works and Transportation a better understanding of the extent of the project. I think we're coming at a solution just from different, different angles.
Yes. Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I have to take a look at the amendment and be happy to talk with you as well. Glad the sponsor and you are at the same page. I'm just curious from the testimony related to how this came about, where there was an initial mailer sent out, a action had been taken by the public, and then the parameters changed, yet the opt-in was still applied even though the project was different. Is that accurate?
I cannot speak to the specifics of the project itself.
I'll ask that question later, but I, I just want to make sure, is this only applying to, is this specific to a situation in which a opt-in has happened and the project has changed, or is this applying to there will now be a phase of opt-out in every situation?
This would create an opt-out option for sewer projects that are petitioned projects but aren't public health projects.
I see she's also, the director's also signed up to speak. I just thought that you were here, I would ask. But just wanted, I'm sure that's the case. I was just curious from a standpoint, because how we got here and try, it seems from a reasonable standpoint, and also you're working together on this, that there, this also could have been avoided if we recognized that there had been a change and then, while it would have taken an extra step and extra effort, that change being informed to the public and also given another opportunity to then opt into that, that new project. But just, I want to make sure this doesn't apply everywhere, just to the situation, which it sounds like it does. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, and I'm
Thank you, Councilman Young.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Marks?
And I would assume that, you know, the administration had this November 1st deadline it put out to the community. Should the bill be enacted, that would be a moot point, correct? Should it be enacted, that November 1st deadline would be a moot point. Remember, the administration had, the administration went to the community, the administration said the Perry Hall Manor you had until November 1st to agree to do this, and this bill basically eliminates that deadline. I think we've achieved a good compromise here, and it will allow property owners, no, it will allow property owners to basically opt out if they don't have that failing septic system. If, if it's a public health, nowhere in the county can you opt out. Well, we, we can get to this. We can, we can have the discussion. There's nowhere in the county where it's not a public health where you can opt out. Am I, am I missing the point here? So if that, if that is still a concern with the community, we're going to still have to have discussions about the bill.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Marks. Thank you, Mr. Croner. Ms. Bel Castro, it looks like we have a few speakers?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Rose Marie Lazati, who is here in person.
Lazati is here again.
Followed by William Smith, who is also here in person.
Good evening, Ms. Lazati. How are you?
Having me again. I was last here October 28th to speak on behalf of the Perry Hall Manor community. And again, I was, I'm testifying for the bill, and now I'm kind of confused with what just happened. I heard that there was a concession from the administration and that it would focus on opting out, which gave us what we wanted initially. But there have been other concerns that have come about, and I think the financial, the transparency, disclosure of information to the community, and it's not just Perry Hall Manor. It's like moving forward, forward with sewer projects. But before I get twisted, I'm going to just read my concerns. So the problem with the concession and this discretion, while I appreciate the county's concession to allow residents to opt out, I must stress that a successful public sewer project relies on broad participation. Allowing gaps significantly increases the per-home cost and undermines the economic viability of the infrastructure designed for our entire community. Bill 7725 moves us in the right direction. However, the necessity of this legislation has brought to light a critical failure in the current process. We have a severe lack of mandated transparency and due process for personal property owners, which, Mr. Marks, you brought to light in that amendment. For residents to make informed decisions about projects that involve significant costs and permanent disruption to their personal property, they require clear legislative guarantees of information, not discretion left to the whim of a departmental director. Our experience in Perry Hall Manor illustrates why this mandate is desperately needed. So withholding cost information right now has been a significant factor for the Perry Hall Manor residents and, and would be for any Baltimore County community down the line. In 2019, the former DPWT Director Steve Walsh successfully provided Perry Hall Manor with estimated projects, project costs, and homeowner assessments. Yet the current director, Lauren Buckler, states it's impossible to do the same. This contradiction is not acceptable. We should require clarity on the scope and estimated cost to determine our financial liability. Further disturbing was to learn that Ms. Buckner has little knowledge of our project as she represented our project on October 28th with false information. Ms. Buckner stated that our community lots are between one quarter and one half acre. This is incorrect. Perry Hall Manor has over 10 homes exceeding one acre, 15 homes between .7 and one acre. Our smallest lot is .45 acre. There's no quarter, and the majority of the homes are about three quarters of an acre. The grinder pump, pump capacity, when we were talking about the 10 by 10 feet of land that is specifically for the grinder pump. One of the council members asked, what can they do with that property? And she said, as long as they don't dig down, like you can park a car on it. Well, the DPWT's own document called, sent all of us property owners, the property owner information for Baltimore County maintained grinder pumps, so we know what to do with these grinder pumps. It specifically states that the tank is fiberglass and cannot withstand large loads such as a car or riding mower. This is not a minor detail. It's a critical piece of property use and safety information. The project design cost, again, Ms. Buckler did not represent with authenticity the cost of our project. She said this project is going to be much cheaper. The homeowners will come out paying only $4,000 to $5,000 a home. It will cost homeowners $4,000 to $5,000 just to collapse their tank and make them, the septic tank, and make them safe. And in fall, the fall project update that we got for 2025, we, all home, all of us homeowners received this. It states the cost of the project will increase from the estimate given in 2021 and 2022. Most of this cost increase is due to rising construction cost and not because of design. So my concern right now, and I think after hearing her testimony and looking at this amendment, moving forward, personal property rights are huge, and many people buy their homes looking at, at it as an investment. We deserve transparency. We deserve the respect of transparency. And moving forward, I think legislating transparency is important here. The financial, fiscal, physical, and legal complexities of these projects demand that the process is not left to departmental discretion. The appropriate course of action demonstrated by Director Walsh is to provide necessary information for decision-making. I urge the council to move Bill 7725 forward, but to ensure its success, we must pass companion legislation if we are accepting the legislation if we are accepting the simplicity of just opting out. That mandates a standardized, transparent project, process, including mandated mandatory disclosure, requiring DPWT to provide good faith estimates of project scope, design, and per-home assessment costs before any community commitment is requested. Property rights protection, establishing a clear legally defined process for addressing property access easements and the limitations of installed equipment. And to this, to this point, having these grinder pumps, like I had stated before, people don't know what that means as far as providing a 15-foot easement. Do you take down your shed, your fences? What happened to the swimming pool that takes up the whole backyard? Where's that 10 by 10 plot going to fit? So for this to be, it felt like, and it has felt like this whole process, like we're being bulldozed without proper information to determine what is best for us as homeowners. I know there is a core center in our neighborhood.
We're on seven and a half minutes.
Oh, all right. All right. So we want, we want to be partners in improving Baltimore County's infrastructure. To be effective partners, we require the facts, the process, and the truth.
Thank you.
My thing didn't ding.
It did. You talked through it. Well, we could turn it up louder. Oh, is it quiet? Is it quiet? I could have held up cards, maybe.
I think the issue, Mr. Chairman, is that homeowners with fully functional septic systems should not be forced in. That's the issue, right? They should, they should have the opt-out. If it is a failing system, that's a different story, but it's those with fully functioning septic should not be forced to opt in, right? That's, that's the core.
But whether it's health or not.
Right. That's what we're trying to get to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lozati. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is William Smith, followed by Robert Swiderski, who is on virtually.
Mr. Smith, how are you? If you want, I'll flag you three minutes.
Just real quick to the point, I think the big problem I have with the whole thing is the grinder pumps. A grinder pump fails, on average, seven years. I've talked to plumbers that tell me it fails five. I see, I've talked to some people who provide grinder pumps that say it'll last for, you know, 10 years or 15. The big thing is, and if I go to the regular, what I was going to say, if I may follow up with another Mark Twain comment, "A lie can be halfway around the world while truth is still tying its shoe," seems to apply a little bit in this situation. Less than 8% of the septics in Perry Hall Manor have been repaired in over a 55-year period. As noted previously, several originally identified failed systems in 2019 later passed private inspection. As described last time, statistically, if this ratio of 8% over 55 years, if it's, even if it's just for Perry Hall Manor, it says that the majority of the septics are good for at least another 20 years easily just by raw statistics alone, not taking into account any, any other sort of kind of background information. The primary public health concern is that a failing septic can leak into the water supply. Seven years from now, when grinder pumps begin to fail right and left, we will be leaking raw sewage back into our homes. We will still run the risk of leaking sewage into our wells, and worse yet, the problem will come much sooner and after we've spent millions of dollars to fix it. If however, now, I'm going to stop here because I've got another thought, but bottom line is, Councilman Marks, you're exactly right. I've got a functioning septic, and mine's, ours is coming up on 70 years, okay? It's doing fine. We've had it, we've maintained it, everything's going well. The vast majority of the septic systems in our area are doing just fine at 55 years old. And like I said, when only 8% of them have failed, it's just inconceivable. I mean, it's adding 2 plus 2 and getting 117 as to why we wind up in a situation where things would be much worse. Why in the world should I be mandated to take out my septic system doing great for 70 years and probably good for another 30 or 40, and put it in a grinder pump that's going to fail 70 years from now? That's, I mean, why am I going to make it? The bottom line is statistically, I'm going to make the public health worse with grinder pumps by a factor of three at least mathematically. One other thought I have is if we took that same funding and put it into public water, the main public health concern is immediately addressed. In addition, we also get the following. We've got a guarantee of a clean water supply as long as the city doesn't mess that up. We can finally add fire hydrants to the neighborhood. Individual homeowners' connection cost will be less. Layout connection is much easier than with a sewer, and when, 20 years from now, an occasional septic does fail, there'll be many more places in the yard to put it. All of these ideas were presented in the handout that I gave you guys back on the third. There's another handout that has something close to this that I'm giving you tonight. And, oh, I'm five seconds over, but let me point out one last thing. At the very least, please let us vote to opt out of a plan that would dramatically worsen the reliability of our sewage disposal easily by a factor of three. One last thing, you were talking about a 50-year mortgage. Years ago, they asked George Burns how much longer he'd keep acting, for those of us old enough to remember the actor. His reply was that he was booked for another five years. So I don't know if a 50-year mortgage applies to keeping us around longer or not, but for what it's worth. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Smith.
Did you hear that director read?
Question. I was talking to the director. Councilman Jones, did you have a question for Mr. Smith or just a comment?
No, I guess I had just a comment. I wanted to make sure that Mr. Smith was looking at the proper ratio. In other words, every year that a septic system works, you're getting closer and closer to a point where it will fail. So I'm guess offering some friendly advice. Because it was operating for 50 years doesn't necessarily mean you have another 50 to go. You're getting closer to a point where you're going to have a problem. One more thing I would ask him to consider, a grinder pump you can fix. When your drain fields no longer work because it has closet clutter up and it doesn't work anymore, you can have some serious problems, and you may or may not be able to fix it. Only point, this is a person who has a well and septic, and I'm just putting that out there for your consideration. That's it.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate the end of the comment, Councilman Jones, and I do want to address that briefly if I may. There have been, the 10 fields that have failed in the previous, in the 55-year period, they moved it from one spot to another. A gentleman that's in our group had his fail just a few years ago. It cost him, I think, about $8,000 to move his field from one part of the yard to the other. The problem is, is that the amount that keep out around the wells has increased by legislation, and that has made many of the yards impossible to put it in another place. If you put water in, that fixes that problem, but the other main problem, though, is, is that just by raw statistics alone, if, if the statistic was correct for the 20-year type analysis, then over 55 years, virtually every one of the fields we currently have would have been replaced, and not only would they have been replaced, but many of them would be replaced two or three times. So the statistic that says it's 20 years, I've got a professor of statistics at UMBC, a colleague that I was working with. I asked her specifically about the distribution, and the bottom line is, it's not even close to a 20-year failure rate. Now, you're right, I'm a year closer, but at this point, plotting it out for the time that we've had, our septic fields are probably at a minimum good for another 20 years, probably much more than that. And the grinder pump fails in seven. Yes, you can replace the grinder pump. It's going to cost me $35,000, but many of us, as Dottie pointed out, have fields that have yards that are an acre, an acre and a half. I mean, bottom line is.
That you can replace $35,000?
Sorry?
You say $35,000 to replace a grinder pump?
Yeah, you can replace a grinder pump, you can move a septic field. Both of them can be done. The thing is, is that the septic field statistically, in our area, maybe we've got Miracle Soil and Perry Hall, I don't know, but in our area, with the septic fields that we currently have, they've been going for 55 years strong, and the vast majority of them have never been replaced. I mean, they think, maybe they did things much better in the 60s, that's possible. But all that said, we can move a septic field. If something goes down the drain, we can rotor, router it out, but if it goes into the grinder pump, it's busted, and if you break it, you buy it. So now we're putting our own grinder pump in at $35,000 if somebody visits my home and accidentally flushes something. I mean, there's, there's a.
I guess I've never heard of a 35.
I would rather keep a septic field. I mean, if you could do a gravity-fed thing, but the thing is completely solved if you put in water instead of trying to put sewer in. I mean, you can put public water into a septic field. That works fine. So I mean, if you're really worried about drinking water, if that's where the public health concern comes into play, why would I make, even if it goes, I mean, there's nothing that says that it's going to go less than seven years. I'm sorry, I'm prattling on, but.
Councilman Jones, did you have anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please. Okay, it's Mr. Robert Swiderski. Mr. Swiderski, are you with us? Am I pronouncing that correctly? Need to unmute yourself, sir.
Your septic system is working, but how much longer it will be working? And this is an opportunity maybe to eliminate the stress of how long do I have with a septic system and take advantage of public sewer. But let me just come to start what I'd like to say. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Bob Swiderski, and I'm the Vice President of the Citizens to Preserve the Community of Perry Hall Manor. The option to opt out has more significance than just participating or not participating in the sewer project. It's about our freedom of choice, our right not to be forced to participate in a different project than we signed up for. Public Works, please provide us project costs and grinder pump information that will allow the community to make an informed decision. Allow us to make an informed choice. I will be sharing project cost information that has been provided by Public Works. My message may be viewed aggressive, but I would like to apologize in advance, but I feel it's necessary for the council members' awareness. During the October 28th work session testimony, Lauren Buckler mentioned several times the initial pumping station project would cost only, only $4,000 per house. However, she also mentioned the new pumping, the new project with 100% grinder pumps has an estimated cost of around $11.5 million. What was not shared was the grinder pump project will increase the owner's cost to approximately $14,000 or more. So it will increase from $4,000 to $14,000. During the test, during the same testimony, it was stated the project really didn't change. In my opinion, it has changed. From a project with a pumping station to no pumping station to 100% grinder pumps, from $4,000 per home to $14,000 per home, over a 300% increase. The annual fee on our owner's tax bill will increase from approximately $300 to over $1,400 a year. In my opinion, the project has changed to a person like myself and my neighbors who are concerned about the increased costs and are unfamiliar with grinder pump technology. It has taken Public Works five years to determine they can't secure land for a pumping station. In my opinion, this is unacceptable, and the delay is due to Public Works' lack of project ownership and management. In five years, there's still not a design complete or a shovel in the ground. Public Works' delays has caused the project cost to increase at no fault of Perry Hall Manor. The pumping station project in 2021 cost $10.0 million, and today, the same project would cost $12.5 million, a tremendous negative impact to owners if the pumping station project was built. The annual cost would increase from approximately $300 per year to $1,000, I'm sorry, to $1,800 or more per year. I would ask the council members to consider requiring Public Works to assume more of the project cost due to their lack of urgency and project management regarding this public health sewer project. Councilman Marks, on behalf of our community, I would like to thank you and recognize you for your steadfast support of our community regarding this public health sewer project and numerous other community topics. Thank you, and thank you, council members, for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Be safe, be, stay warm. Hopefully, we won't have 27-degree weather tonight.